We are back in the Committee of the Whole meeting for February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And at this time, item number two, do we have any urgent items from any of the councilors for tonight? Okay, then we need a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Counselor Corbiel.
I move you accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion, all in favor? Oh, and just before we continue, to those, to those people who are here or at home watching online, this is the Committee of the Whole meeting, so this is the one that's a little more informal. It's more of a question and answer session, discussion meeting. So you'll see that it's, it's done a little differently than the regular public meetings. And Ms. Sawatsky, are there staff introductions that your department wanted to do, or?
Yes, Your Worship, not my department, but I believe Community Services and Infrastructure and Development. I'm very excited to introduce our two new staff in our Community Services Department. Linda Bernicki has come on with the town as our Social Services Coordinator, taking over the portfolios for Handy Bus, FCSS, and the Youth Club. She's been here about a month, and she's doing really great work. And Mark Pretzslaf is our Recreation Manager. He's taken over the portfolio for all of our rec facilities and will be the leader of opening our new Strathmore Motor Products Sports Center. So we wanna, he's also been here about a month. So, that's my department.
Welcome to the staff. Hopefully you'll enjoy your time here, and we, we appreciate having you. Thank you.
My turn. I'd like to introduce our new Contract Officer, David Lavasser. He joins us on Monday here to replace Hetty, who is retiring at the end of this week. So I'm really excited to have David here. He brings out a vast knowledge of contracts, specifically around the financial contract, which is gonna be really good for our new renewals on our operations contracts and a bunch of other things, as well as looking after all the other work that we've done. So I'm really excited to have him on, and yeah, we've made great progress already. And I think we're, he's been tied in conference room with Hetty for the last three days, so we're getting it transferred quickly.
Well, thank you, Mark, and welcome again from Council, and welcome to staff. Hopefully you enjoy your, that's David. Did I just say David? No? Well, welcome, David. We're glad you're here. Thank goodness this is Committee of the Whole. We have no delegations tonight, which brings us to item four, Confirmation of Minutes. The January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Thank you. We have a motion from Counselor Peterson, all in favor. The motion is adopted, and the minutes are accepted for January seventeenth. Item five is Unfinished Business. I don't think we have anything there. Which brings us to item six, Items from Administration. And six point one is the Progress Report, Land Use Bylaw Project, which is on page seven.
Your Worship. Council may want to move into committee.
Oh, yes. Okay, we need a motion to go back into Committee of the Whole. Counselor Corbiel.
I move you go into Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion, all in favor? And we're back in Committee of the Whole. Thank you. Six point one, Progress Report on the Land Use Bylaw Project. Werner, welcome.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes.
Thank you. This is probably not the most exciting thing that you've ever done. But it's what I do. And so I, maybe in that context, I'll just make a couple of observations. So we've been, been working on this since basically late last fall. I'm at a point where I think it's appropriate to give Council an update and indicate the direction that we've been going with this. This, and this Development Not Requiring a Permit section, it's foundational, it's basic. It's probably the first and last section you might look at when you're looking at a bylaw, 'cause you always come back to it, and you say, well, how does this fit with this? So that's the, the reason it's here, is it's foundational. The other thing I'd just sort of like to say about it is, it, there's, land use bylaws are not a policy document. They're not like a municipal development plan. They're very much the, the real technical stuff, like, you know? And there's obviously a policy element in it. Like if you say, we prohibit barbed wire fences as fencing in a front yard, we said something. But we might say a whole bunch more things about fences elsewhere, the height and so on and so forth. So I just ask you to keep that in mind. It's, land use bylaws are more about the what and the where, and a little bit about the how. If you look at the how, the how is really largely a building code thing. But we might still say, you know, in an R1 district, no, sorry, you can't build a fifty-foot-high house. There's, there's limits, or there's, there's setbacks, and so there's things like that. So given that this is very much a draft, we're just flying some ideas past Council. And one of the more recurring issues is RV parking in the front yard. And we're suggesting that there's, you can spend a lot of time and effort on this issue and not really resolve much. And we're suggesting with some, some conditions, some draft circumstances, perhaps we could allow one in a front yard and then sort out the details from there, as long as it stays on your property and not projecting over sidewalk. And that, the rationale, I think, is, is in the report. Secondly, and this is really where we're gonna visit, I'm certainly gonna be visiting and revisiting this, is establishing a protocol for development that Council, in essence, has approved or is absolutely essential. There's certain infrastructure that we don't wanna issue a development permit, because if we issue a development permit, there's an appeal process. And certain things, you don't make them a permitted use. You put some boundaries around them. And the minute that you put those boundaries around them, you're open to appeal. Well, if, if Council has approved a project, allocated a budget, I think we're taking considerable risks, you know, throwing it out there. I mean, that's not to preclude a public engagement process in advance of the project. It's not to preclude any kind of a public engagement process during the project. But there comes a point when I think we would be much better served, I think our staff would be better served, I think Council would be better served, if we said, here, there's certain things that we're not gonna require a development permit for. That doesn't mean we're not gonna do due diligence, we're not gonna, it, it may actually improve things, rather than, rather than the development permit just simply becoming a paper exercise that we're obligated to do, I'd much rather see a proposal, if I may, submitted to, to the department. The department reviews it, circulates it to whoever needs it, and makes a recommendation back to the project manager. I think Counselor Peterson wanted to.
I'm just looking for clarification, 'cause no matter how much you've tried to educate me, it hasn't always been useful. One of the things that I've heard you talk about a lot is this easing of, or this, you know, that, that ambivalent relationship between private property and, and land use bylaws. It's always, ever thus, something that you're familiar with, but the rest of the world doesn't walk in that realm necessarily. And if I remember correctly, I remember you saying that it would be good to not see land use as a means by which planning puts us, you know, at an institutional setting at a, at an arm's distance. So having, I remember those two things keenly. So if, so if, if that is the case, is there, you know, we're, we're in the process of reconsidering our municipal development plan. So how, how do they link? And maybe that's a question for another day, and I'm happy to wait.
It's one of those things that I could probably talk for about an hour on, and I don't know if, at the end of the day, we'd be a whole lot wiser. Conventional wisdom is always that a land use bylaw implements the municipal development plan. I've been doing this for forty years, and I think that's the biggest myth out there. It can be instrumental in doing it. Like if we say, you know, if we have something in mind that isn't on the map, that isn't, you know, like we want hypothetically, right, we want to create, we're disregarding the Calgary Metropolitan Plan and all the stuff that's going on. Let's say the municipal development plan says, we want a large lot country residential subdivision in this town. Okay, so I write a district in the bylaw that has half acre, one acre, two acre minimum lot size. So in that sense, it implements it. It can also implement it in the way that philosophically, at a big level, and I'm really trying to get to your question, at a philosophical level, every bylaw, and I've already written the next item for Committee of the Whole, where we're gonna talk about a municipal planning commission, and, and what's that? Municipal Planning Commission and some other stuff. And, and so, do you write a bylaw with minimum standards, which are then, I mean, most engineers will tell you that the only defensible standard is a minimum standard. Anything else becomes somebody's wish or somebody's desire.
And impacts private property.
And impacts private property. So we have a five foot, we have a, no, I'm gonna say, we have one point five meters, which is fairly close to five feet. So I hear a setback. We could go four feet, you know? And that would actually, there'd be some economic benefit to the developers doing that. But Council has, you know, given us clear direction on, on the five feet. So there are some philosophical things in a municipal development plan that can really help guide the bylaw. Unfortunately, they're often just disconnected. Municipal development plan, I don't think is gonna talk about fences or a lot of that stuff that we have in our building heights. There might be some broad philosophical things, but I, the reason I think we can safely do this, independent of a municipal development plan, is we have a whole bunch of issues that we need to deal with. And I'm gonna try and write a bylaw, rather than precluding is enabling. And so you're gonna have both sides. This is gonna be a yin and yang. There's gonna be things, in this district, you can't do this. But one of the things I wanna talk to you about next time are direct control districts, that if we do through a direct control district or site-specific district, we can approve almost anything, as long as Council agrees that it's, it's worthwhile doing. This'll be a rezoning, a public hearing process. So, does that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's.
I mean, the other, the other thing that I do think that there's a nuance here is, I don't wanna distinguish a government office building from a private office building. An office building's an office building, you know? On the other hand, if we're looking at things like storm ponds and lift stations, I don't wanna, I'm gonna say, well, you know, I don't wanna be issuing development permits for that. It, it gets, it's goofy. And I think, at, at the end of the day, if you look at it closely, I mean, that's not to say we're not gonna ask for a development permit for a school or a fieldhouse or a, you know, stuff like that, or a hospital, but certainly, there's gonna be things that, I think a protocol is better than a permit.
Well, that, that's, and we've never really opened that black box about, about how we define ourselves between that, that line, between private property and, well, there shouldn't be a line, that's what you're saying. Everybody is on a, I like the concept. Be interesting to see how it'll roll out in a municipal planning. Thank you.
I think the next thing, I, just very quickly, we currently require a development permit for a hall, for home offices, and, you know, people babysitting a few kids, and I'm going, if it's less than six kids, do we really wanna stick our nose into there? I don't think so. I don't think there's any utility or benefit. And the same thing with the home office. We may still very well ask for a business license for it, but if somebody's, if all they have is a, is an office, and there's nobody, there's no customers or anything going to the home, it's not. They, there, there's no benefit. Even when you charge a hundred bucks for a permit, it, you do, you know, the work, but, like I say, there's no utility. It's just, and it's not a, it's not a benefit. It's not a revenue producer, I'll tell you that much. And last but not least, there's been issues as Council, sorry, certainly two members of Council would be fully aware, with stripping and grading and digging holes, and then we're getting permits. And that's kind of, I'm saying, in the foreseeable future, my proposal is, in the foreseeable future, stripping and grading requires a development permit in all cases, unless, unless it's part of a project that has a development permit. So when we approved the school, or when we issued the development permit, there was a site grading, site drainage, and site servicing plan to go along with that. And so, rather than treating them as completely separate. I had an inquiry a few years ago about stripping and grading a hundred and twenty acres in, near the middle of the community, and I said, sure. You're gonna tell me, do you have an erosion control plan for when it starts to blow onto the houses downwind? Oh. Didn't go very far. Anyway, I, I, unless there are, I don't wanna take too much of your time. I think we're on twenty minutes into this. If there's any questions or comments, or?
So, so I think, I think.
Counselor Peterson.
I'm being way too informal. As a, you know, just, just related to page eleven around the recreational vehicle, I, I know you already identified that's gonna be one that, that's gonna get lots of attention in the community. And so, so I'm thinking, sort of commence it with the individual who came to Council to present, to say, you know, we'd be happy to pay permits to have them parked on a pad in our own property, in our own front yard, and will there be height standards? Will there be, you know, if I'm taking the, preventing the sun from my neighbor's lawn, you know? Those nuances that he brought forward were pretty.
Yeah, I, I guess where, where I come from at the moment, and just for, this is for the benefit of.
Absolutely. Yeah, discussion.
Currently, we have a situation where you can park an RV in a front yard for, for three days within a week.
Right.
And I think our bylaw officers, and myself and other people get, one person complains, and then you have to deal with all the other ones in the neighborhood. And so that's, that's one. I think if you're gonna regulate this, it's almost all or nothing. You either don't do it for more than twenty-four hours for everybody, or you pick some other number. Well, three days doesn't work. And I'm gonna offer that seasonal is a problem, for two reasons. There's the practical problem, and then there's the, that legal logical problem. If I can do something for six or seven months of the year, why can't I do it for the balance of the year? What is so egregious that I can't do it for twelve months if I can do it for six or seven? The, the flip side of that is, if we have situations, then there's, there's problems around other parts of this bylaw, how they relate to it, like, I'll just tell you quickly, we don't require a, for a development permit for a driveway, as long as it's entirely on your property. But if it's entirely on your property, it can't be a driveway, 'cause then it doesn't connect to the street. So I build a parking pad, I drive over the boulevard, rip out the boulevard, leave everything, but I never needed a permit, 'cause the parking pad's only on my street. So there's, there's that, I don't even wanna advertise that too much, but it's out there, and we know about it. And so, my, my, the practical problem is, is that if people are parking in their front yard, we would expect them to park on a parking pad. So now you spend the ten, fifteen thousand dollars, and you pave it, and then you tell me you can only use it for six months of the year? I don't wanna go there, frankly. Or if, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's Council's decision, but I, I just don't think that it's, it's reasonable. Now, if they park five or six RVs in the front yard, well, that's maybe a different thing.
Or if they have people, if they're renting them to the neighborhood.
Or living in them.
Oh, well, they're having people live in them, yeah.
So those are, and the, the other option, of course, is that we take this out of the land use bylaw altogether and put it in some other bylaw. Like a community standards bylaw, where it just simply becomes a ticketing item, rather than. One of the things that I want to avoid in this bylaw, for things like that, you know, in theory, if, if you tell me I can't park development, if you tell me that I can't do it, then I'm gonna apply for a permit. If I don't like the answer, I'm gonna appeal. And I think we wanna get away from, if, if it's a clear black and white standard, you deal with the bylaw enforcement, you don't go through an appeal process.
Chair, Counselor Peterson.
So, so this is coming to us for information, and so, you know, you're, don't want us drinking from the fire hose. You feed us a little bit of time. My question is, when, when do you think it will come back? How long, how long do we have before we digest it?
I, I would've said, within a month or two, before Christmas. But then I started looking at the Municipal Government Act that was.
The last thickness of it?
No, it, there's, there's issues with it.
Yes, there is.
And so I, I have completed the administration section as of today of the bylaw. I'm at page one twenty.
So?
I'm thinking that if, like, from now, it's, it's districts, and, you know, it's R1, R2, and general rules and stuff. So I'm thinking by spring. I'm hoping realistically.
So we've got some time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Montgomery, sorry.
Thank you.
Can I do that to you still?
That's okay. I'll get a brighter light. So I just had a couple of questions. One is, why is a gravelled surface unacceptable for parking on?
Well, good, very good question. Increasingly, we're seeing communities, neighborhoods, where the front yard is being gravelled. If you allow gravel landscaping, don't be surprised if you see six pickup trucks parked in front of a fourplex, axle to axle. I can provide photographs. And, and so, there's, the other thing, and, and this is, this is a convenient argument, but it's, it's an important argument. If you allow gravel landscaping, it tends to become impervious over time. And I have different, I've had different engineers give me different numbers. It's, you know, anywhere from, from sixty-five to eighty-five percent impervious. And so, we put in storm sewers in order to provide surface drainage. It's all based on the assumption that about, you know, some, some reasonable number is gonna be hard-surfaced. Well, the neighborhoods that start graveling their front yards, and that becomes an impervious service, it really starts to put a strain on the storm sewer system.
Okay, actually, that was a, part of my next question was just whether water runoff was a consideration. 'Cause like, if you're gonna be, you know, paving, I guess, you know, an extra portion, I guess, of your yard as well, that, that's gonna be impervious as well.
I think the paving is, we can deal with that, 'cause we're gonna have some certain standards around driveways. I mean, if we don't, then there's no difference between paving your entire front yard or graveling it. So there's, there, there needs to be some, some boundaries around that. What those exactly are is, is as we get into narrower lots, you know, we have a forty-foot lot with a twenty-foot driveway. Well, once it goes beyond a certain threshold, you can't park in front of it anyway. You know, so you lose your on-street parking, so those are, those are not easy questions.
Well, I appreciate you answering them. Well, I guess this one just popped into my head. Is there, is there any areas, maybe in the older part of town, that, that say gravelled driveways are grandfathered in?
I don't know. If they're, I mean, it would depend. We have, we have a bylaw at the moment. If it is a driveway, and it doesn't have a permit, it should've got a permit. But I, I know of a few, and that's why there's.
Well, so I, I live on Waddy Lane, and, and there's a few gravelled driveways on that road. Yeah, so.
I mean, if they were put in previous, under the old bylaw.
I mean, they're probably about sixty or seventy years old, so. Yeah. Okay. That was, like I said, that was just, I'm, I'm in the area, so. And I guess the other question I have, just is to do with the special temporary function. Is that defined somewhere?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. Basically, just tents and stuff, right? You're, you're doing a, I don't know, car dealer decides to have a tent sale on a parking lot for a few days, or, or, I mean, it doesn't have to be, it can be a, conceivably a public function. If it's a public function on public land, we're not gonna get a permit for candidate celebrations. But if there's, if there's something going on for a weekend, a folk festival or something, and we might say, hey, you know, I mean, there's, there's usually, it's not even a planning function so much as it may be a policing and another function, and, and emergency service, and so on and so forth. So we can at least ask the question.
Okay, that's everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Bauer, or, sorry, Deputy Mayor Bauer.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Fisher, hi. I just have a question with regards to signs and billboards. Under your background context, you said that, that there are, we are establishing, but not limited to, design standards on signs and billboards. So we're, we seem to be getting a lot of different varying heights and widths of signs and, and density in signs. Is there a specific land use bylaw that will deal with signage in our town? Are we getting to that eventually? Just because I've noticed the longhorn signs, and it just seems to be really exploding right now.
Yes. Here's how I would propose we move forward on this, and this has been, Mr. Ralton will confirm, this is a conversation we've had. Doing a good sign bylaw is a lot of work. It is almost as much work as doing a land use bylaw. But a couple of things can be saving graces here. It is something that is expressly authorized by the Municipal Government Act that we can deal with. You know, it says a, you know, by, you know, the act actually says, if they are, your billboards, if they are allowed at all, okay? So I think what we've got is a rather limited bylaw at the moment, dealing with signage. And because of past practices, we've also been fairly lenient with a lot of things. I think the, and I hate to scare anybody by saying this, but I think Calgary has some of the best signage legislation in the country. All the signage companies basically come out of Calgary. They expect to follow Calgary rules, and we, they tell, when we tell them they don't have to follow Calgary rules, they go, oh! And so I think, you know, whether you're in Lethbridge, or Medicine Hat, or in Tabor, or Strathmore, there's one, or, there's one out of Ontario that I know of, in Cambridge, Ontario. And the rest of them are basically operating out of Calgary, and they're quite happy to follow Calgary's rules. So that might be a place where, rather than custom writing something from scratch, we buy a car off the lot, as-is.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Counselor Corbiel.
Thank you, Your Worship. This was very long and extensive. It's good. I'm not, I'm, it's, it's a lot of work. I can, I can get that much. No. Okay, but what is the difference, in, in your opinion, I guess, between, like, restricting the RV use days or, or months? I wouldn't rather, I would rather see minimum requirements on the actual RV sitting on the, on the pad or whatever, rather than, like you say, like, minimum requirements are better than more, right? It's, it's like, almost like a wish list.
Yeah, so I, I think there are, there are technical minimums.
Right. I would much rather see technical minimums, in my opinion, than fixed days or months.
I guess, when I, when I speak about a technical minimum, you can only make a parking stall so narrow. And then it ceases working, 'cause you can't open your doors, right? With something like RV parking, I think that is really kind of a community values question. So, the, there, and, and I, I mean, I think I've, I've taken this maybe a little further already than maybe I should've in terms of detail. But I, I think maybe what you're getting at, if, if I understand you correctly, it's how big an RV? You know, is it a, is a, is something on the back of a pickup truck? Is it, you know, twenty feet long, or is it sixty feet long?
It would just be easier to, I guess, instead of go days, it would, might be easier to, like, like those specifications, so that people are.
One of the options that we have, one of the options that I'm actually proposing. And this is not, I mean, there's at least four options. Twenty-four hours, leave as is, seasonal, or allow maximum of one.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'd hate to see a, you know, a Greyhound bus parked in front of my neighbor's house, but, angle, of course, you know.
Yeah.
But, there might be, you know, those are, that's kind of the next iteration, because we do have restrictions on the maximum gross vehicle weight or tar weight that you can put in a residential area, but it's probably going to be considerably higher than currently is because of enforcement issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Corbille. Any other questions?
I just have a comment.
Councillor Peterson.
I just, I just think that one of the things that I see about this is that there's sort of that acknowledgement that, that's coming with this new administration about, about social engagement and social production. And, and I like seeing that, that, that those lines are blurring. I think that's a really healthy thing for our community. I think it's something that I see coming from this new council that I've really, really appreciated. And I used to, I was a student of John Friedman's work, I'm sure you were, of a similar era. And my husband said, now that he's dead, I can't quote him anymore. But, I, I really think, you know, he, he used to say that public sentiment about local improvement would never be, would never be presented with unbounded gratitude. I was thinking about our, our open house last night. I think it's hard work, but I really think it's worth it. And, and I like that social engagement piece. I, I like the responsiveness I see to it, and I'm, I'm really grateful for this, and I'm glad we have some time.
Thank you.
I'm glad we have some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Peterson. Thank you, Werner, for your presentation and your discussion. Mr. Thackery.
I'd just like to acknowledge Werner. He's worked really hard and put in on some really, really very brilliant work into a really tough piece of project. And I, I don't think we could ask for a better person to work on this project. So, I just wanted to recognize him and thank him for that.
Thanks, James. And once again, thanks, Werner, very much. Item six point two, the AUM, AUMA Police Funding Letter Writing Campaign. Ms. Swatzky?
Thank you, Your Worship. Counsel's received, we've received an email from the AUMA informing counsel of a letter writing campaign that's going to be put on by the AUMA in regard to policing, the police funding letter. The email goes on to explain how policing costs are only paid by urban municipalities, and the letter funding camp, or the letter campaign is, is really in regard to an everyone should pay model. So we're bringing this forward to counsel for their input.
Thank you, Jen. Any comments or questions from counsel? So this would be coming back to us as a potential motion to write a letter in a, in a public meeting? Okay, thank you. Councillor Cox?
Sorry, I was, did we not talk about this a little bit already, about saying that we didn't want to go on the bandwagon, and that we wanted to do our own thing? Or were we wanting to go onto the bandwagon? Sorry, I need clarification.
Uh, Councillor Peterson?
Well, I'm all about this bandwagon. I think it speaks exactly to what-
Did we jump on?
Yeah. I think it speaks exactly to what, what we've been talking about. I, I very much would like to hear Councillor Sobel's input into it, and, and, because he has so much experience in this area. But I think it does speak to exactly what, what we've been talking about. I, I guess, it, it shocked me when I, when I saw this, because, you know, I guess you feel isolated and alone when you're in the, in the situation that we're in, and, and, and now seeing this is just, is just so widespread. So, I think that if, if there's movement to be had, it's probably through this process.
Well, and I think that if we're united on different letters in from, from AUMA municipalities, it's going to put less strain on relationships between, for example, our town and a bordering county, that we're trying to make sure policing funds are equitable. If it's, if it's being done on a much wider scale, it puts a little less pressure on us in dealing with our neighbors and, and worrying about how we affect each other. Councillor Cox?
So, Jennifer, does it state where it originated?
Barry Marashita.
Oh, thank you.
City, city of Brooklyn.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just one other question, Jen. This will be coming back when, at a later date, but can we ensure that it comes back when Councillor Sobel's back, since he has a, a wide experience in policing?
Do we have to wait that long?
Or do we have to wait that long, or is it okay to wait that long? Do we have time?
Your Worship, whose administration's plan to bring this forward to the next council meetings next week.
Okay.
I believe Councillor Sobel will be in attendance next week.
Okay, thank you. I thought he was missing one more, too. Okay, thank you. So this will come back, that'll be good.
Excuse me?
Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Um, Your Worship, I was just wondering, is it worthwhile to bring this up at the Wheatland County meeting that you're having next week?
They'll get the same one.
Is it worthwhile to do a, is it worthwhile to do a joint partnership letter?
We should put it on your agenda.
Okay.
More different organizations, though?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think the difference is we're, we're already paying a, a large proportion of the policing, so I'm not sure how County Wheatland will, will react to that, although I know they've been having some positive talks regarding helping fund policing more than in the past. Councillor Peterson?
I, I agree, Mayor Huell, that they, they absolutely do see the need, it's just that, that they have relationships with many different municipalities other than us.
Yep.
And I think that, that doing what, what Mayor Marashita is suggesting through the AUMA puts this back where it belongs, as a, as a issue that needs to be decided between federal and provincial governments. And, you know, it's really convenient when, when small communities wind up fighting with each other for scarce resources. It takes it out of the realm where it actually belongs, and this puts it back there. And, and I think that because of that, we'll get support from the county as well.
Thank you, Councillor Peterson. Any other comments or questions? Okay. So we'll look forward to that coming back, and we go on to six point three, downtown parking, page thirty-three. And Ms. Swatzky?
Thank you, Your Worship. This item is coming back to counsel on counsel's request. Mr. Code spoke with counsel at the last council meeting as a delegation in regard to downtown parking. And this is coming back for counsel's discussion because counsel has requested administration to draft a bylaw for three-hour parking downtown. So, I just thought counsel would want to discuss this.
Well, I have a general question, and, and maybe other people know this, but do we know where the, which businesses came forward with the request to, to switch to three-hour parking, once we had, we had created two-hour parking, and then it came back to us as a request through Councillor Sobel to go to three-hour parking?
Your Worship, not offhand, a petition was gathered, I guess, names were gathered, and handed in by Councillor Sobel. We can bring that information forward.
Okay. I guess, I just, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, with all the people, with all the businesses who signed the petition, I'm kind of at my wit's end. We have some people saying that it should be three hours, some people saying it's two, and, and three is far too much, that people will just continue to park there for a long time. So we, obviously, we want to make the right, this, wow, all of your lights are on. It's like Christmas over here. We just, we want to make the right decision, but I just, it's sometimes hard to figure out who to listen to.
Do you want me to tell my story again?
Um, no, not, is this the donkey story? No, I don't want to hear the donkey story again. And I have no idea who, who chimed in first with your lights.
I was last.
Yeah. Councillor Montgomery?
That's fine, go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Bauer?
I, I don't really, I'm not really familiar with the complete process of how this is, is going down, and from start to finish. But what I, I did find out last week that I was quite surprised about was that that petition that was brought to us was non-binding, that it wasn't an official petition. And I don't remember it being presented to us in that manner.
It was.
And, it was, okay. And so, it, how much weight does it really carry for us? And is this something that we should consider? Like, Brian is one delegation against over fifty signatures. I'm, I'm really tossing that around, and I don't really know where I'm at yet.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Thank you for that. And you're right, you know, it's, it's hard to decide. If it's a non-binding petition, you don't know if you should give that a lot of weight, and yet you have a lot of signatures, and then something comes in in opposition. It's, it's, you, you would think that we'd be able to get our business owners having consensus as far as what's the best thing for the downtown and for their parking situations, but obviously, we're not getting that way. Councillor Montgomery?
Yeah, I'd be interested, I guess, to see the petition again, and just kind of see who exactly, you know, if it's kind of, you know, you can get fifty signatures from a handful of businesses, I guess, and, you know, if it's the people working at the businesses who have a vested interest in, you know, increasing the parking length so that they can park there, you know, that probably shouldn't carry as much weight as the business owners who want people to come downtown to actually buy stuff. So, yeah, I guess, I, I'd be interested in kind of reexamining that petition, just so I could have a better handle on who's, who's on it, I guess.
Yeah, I, and to follow your point, I think it makes a lot of sense, because you, you could be working on a house purchase and spending a lot of hours at a real estate office downtown, where you might need three hours. But then if you look at Strathmore Valley Drug Mart, people are popping in and out for prescriptions, or, or getting their mail. So, yeah, you raise a good point. Councillor Corbille will do, will do across the board.
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, and I, I, I'm not even sure which way I am at neither. I don't think that we're going to please everyone, obviously, on this kind of thing neither. But, again, the business owners could probably take it upon themselves also to limit, like, you know, it could be one of their, I shouldn't say rules, but really, a policy within their own business, that their, their workers can't park in the front.
And I, I believe that's been tried in the past, and, and some of the businesses have been really successful, having their employees park at Kinsman Parking Lot and the, and the lot by the, the Legion. But, yeah, you're right. It's, it's definitely a problem if your employees, or the store, or the business owner is, is taking up a spot all day.
One last thing, sorry.
Sure.
If it's not strictly enforced now, who's to say that those, the workers aren't doing it already, anyway?
That's true. Councillor Peterson?
Thank you, Worship. I, I know, I know, as I said in, at the last, when, when, when the notice of motion came up, that, that this was a motion that, that I would support, or a bylaw that I, a change that I would support. And, and it's primarily for, for two reasons. The first one is, is that this issue, in my relatively short time on council compared to some of my peers, it's come up six times, and there has been no resolution. And I think that we continue to, to be in this situation where, where there, as Councillor Corbille said, there is no win. And the second thing is, that, is something that Councillor Montgomery brought up before, that, that I hadn't really considered, and should have, and that was, what's the cost to signage? So, so this isn't a cost-neutral thing. There is, there is cost to it. So for those two reasons alone, I, I wouldn't vote for it. But there, there, I have a subsidiary reason, and that was when I, when I did some questioning around, around bylaw, and, and how much enforcement there had really been, it amounted to almost nothing. Nothing in three years, like, two citations or something? And so, so that, that is a subsidiary reason why I wouldn't consider voting for it. And God bless Councillor Sobel's heart that he keeps trying to fix the problem. I don't know, I don't know what the solution would be, but one of the ones that I would suggest that, that would be compelling for me was if, if a huge majority of the downtown businesses came with a legitimate petition, that, on which they agreed, and the petition before us isn't legitimate, so I don't think it should come back. And Councillor Sobel pointed that out. He, he said he brought it because he'd been asked to, but he pointed out really succinctly that it was not a, a binding, a legal or binding petition. And so, those are my reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Peterson. Councillor Cox?
So I'm going to go kind of the opposite of all of you.
I haven't said anything.
I don't, I thought we already did pass it.
Well, right now, I believe there's a two-hour parking.
Yeah, I can clarify, Your Worship. So counsel, counsel did approve the change to three hours, but technically, it has to be done by bylaw. So, they approved the change and asked administration bring forward a, a bylaw.
Okay. And then, can you tell me, have the stickers to change the signs, in which Jason already been purchased?
Great.
And what was the cost of that? Okay, thank you. The other thing I'm wondering, I, we did get a petition, maybe not legitimate, what have you. We did have opposing, but when you read Brian's letter, when, after he said it, he doesn't really have any firm reasons why it can't be three hours either. So, again, we didn't get anything saying what their firm reasons were for wanting it changed to three hours. We didn't really get any firm reasons as to why it shouldn't be three hours either. Now, parking, somebody parking as an employee, they're going to be parking more than three hours. Who works less than three hours in a day? I don't know very many people. So, if they're, if they're parking there as an employee, they're going to have to move anyway. If, whether it's three hours, or whether two, two hours-
They would have to move after two or three.
Yeah. So, I, I'm not sure that that's a valid reason for us to not move it to three hours. I agree that we do need a little bit more from the petition, because they're not really giving us legitimate reasons, other than if somebody is getting their hair done. That's a business thing. Bri, Brian's brought us what he feels is the reasons, but legitimately, if I was getting my hair done, and I was getting it cut and colored and what have you, I would be more than three hours. So that is a legitimate reason why they need three-hour parking. Brian's letter, I mean, I, I get that he's disappointed, but I don't really think he has legitimate reasons for making it not three hours. I don't-
Yeah, I, I see your, I see your point, Councillor Cox. And I, and I totally understand Councillor Peterson's, too, that we're spending all this money and all this time and energy discussing, and, and we really don't have a, a sense of what everybody wants. And, and you, you one would think that the downtown business group could be able to get together and come up with an actual consensus of what, what the vast majority wants, and bring us something official, because we seem to be the ones trying to put in a solution, and it doesn't make them, make them happy anyway, so.
Uh, Your Worship, if I could-
Councillor Montgomery?
Um, so I think like what Mr. Code was possibly trying to draw our attention to is that it has to do with, like, the number of people that are able to come downtown. So I'll give you an example. If the town, for instance, had taken over the co-op building, the co-op used to draw in thousands of people per day into the downtown. If we had taken over the co-op building, how many people come to the town office every day? Like, dozens, you know, on a good day? So we would have basically cut down the possible traffic to the downtown from thousands to dozens, just coming, like, attracting to that particular thing. If, if all the parking spots downtown are being eaten up by people who are, are working in those businesses, like, we could potentially be losing fifty percent of the parking spots downtown. And then that means that there's that many less people that can actually come downtown. And so it's going to be a lot harder to maintain a, a business and sustain a business downtown if there just isn't the traffic flow. Like, we basically need, we need people changing over. We, like, if, and, and I think what Mr. Code was also drawing our attention to is that there isn't many businesses downtown that, that, like, there's, he, what he basically said was that there is no reason to be parked for more than two hours. Like, like, you know, with all the businesses you could possibly stop at on a normal shopping trip, you are probably not going to go over a two-hour limit on, on a normal day. And, yeah, so I guess, like, I, I don't necessarily think we should switch it to three hours. Like I said, I was convinced by the petition, because, you know, it's like, okay, yeah, here's a lot of people that want this. But, you know, it's, when you actually look at, and, and also, I'll give Mr. Code, you know, like, I guess, a certain amount of credit, in that, like, he's been operating his business downtown for as long as I've been alive. And so he's, he, yeah, he's, he's seen, you know, like, a lot of changes, a lot of businesses coming and go. I'll give him a bit of credit as for, like, knowing what it, like, what basically keeps that downtown alive, which I believe, like I said, is, is the people coming in on a daily basis. So, that's, that's kind of how I took his points.
Thank you, Councillor Montgomery. Councillor Cox?
I one hundred percent agree with you, Jason. But what I'm saying is that he's saying, everything he is saying is true. He walks to work, he does these. But, and the people that he thinks want this three hour are, are people that are parking. But now you're saying that it's, that the people that own these businesses are, employees are parking there, then it should be kind of their, it's their businesses that are being affected by their employees. And there is a legitimate business that does require more than two hours, and that's what Bob brought us, was hairdresser. And there is a hairdresser on Main Street. There's two. So, there's two legitimate businesses that do require more than two hours.
Well, and so I gave some thought to that, like, sorry to interrupt, but, so like, with the, the tattoo parlor, for instance, there is that parking lot right beside the tattoo parlor. So, because I was thinking, you know, why don't we just- the tattoo place. So, 'cause I was thinking, you know, why don't we just, you know, give them one spot, basically, and, you know, and, but they really don't even need it. And same with, like, the, the hair places, there is that parking lot right beside there. So, they could park in there all day long, and, and.
Parking lot's owned by the dental office.
But a block the other way, there's a.
Well, but even, but even Kinsman Parking Lot is like right, you know, like hundreds of feet down the road. Um, and, 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 yeah, like, and I think, like, something you should consider as well is that the employees of a business are not necessarily gonna care about the, the long-term vitality of a business, uh, as for, like, you know, like, kind of traffic coming in. And not only that, but you could be, uh, hurting other businesses around you if you are, uh, kind of basically using up spots. Um, so it's, it's not to say that, you know, just like, the, what the spots in front of your business are yours to kind of, you know, waste or use as you want. Um, those are kind of everybody's spots for, you know, the whole, the whole downtown, essentially, I, I feel.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Peterson, and then Counselor Corbier.
Just, just to, just to follow up, when, when I, um, looked at the, I did, I did look at the petition, and there were names there that were glaringly missing. And, and one, of course, was Brian Coates, and, and he, you know, he, he does speak to very specific reasons. And one of the reasons that he speaks to very specifically was that there was no formal process to involve stakeholders. And, and the other thing that I, so I noticed that there were, there were names specifically missing. The owners of Strathmore Valley Drug Mart, which is probably, if not the busiest business on, on Main Street, on Second, would be very close. Their names were not there, those, that co-owned business was not there. I didn't see, uh, primary members of the credit union, although they might have been. There's lots of people that I don't know there. And I'm not sure about, about the, uh, about more than ice cream. But, um, I, I really think that, that, uh, the petition in itself, i- if, if they came back with a compelling, huge majority of the downtown business owners, uh, you know, as a, as a percentage of business, I would, I would very much look at it, but not the way it is right now.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Corbier, you're okay?
Yeah.
Um, just before we finalize this, before, this is coming to us at the next council meeting, Ms. Swatzky. And then, just for clarification, uh, our options are that, that when it comes to us next week, we would either vote in favor of the bylaw, and if we, if we went the other way, were you mentioning that we would rescind that new bylaw? Vote to rescind it, or we would just defeat it if it, if it went to that?
You would just defeat it.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for council members too, so that you know what we're facing as it comes back to us next week. So, that's, that's good, then. Uh, six point four administrative inquiries, responses. Mark, you're coming forward?
Welcome. I do not have an answer for your request last week, but I did promise to bring it to me, the whole, a map for all the councilors to have of the.
Excellent.
Unfortunately, it printed out really small, and I apologize, but if you have really good glasses, you'll be able to read it. Um, but it does give, and some of these pathways have been built. Um, there's another plan that kind of has a little bit of a bathing, uh, but this is what we have currently on file. There is a, a dash line in there that kind of shows the regional pathways, and, um, um, uh, has the one with Grace Park. You can see, the one that's Grace Park kind of doesn't look like how we actually built it, but the function's still there, right? Followed the easement around the bottom of the lake, and we haven't built across the canal, obviously. We just built around, and that still has to be built, but those things are there. And I think the question Mayor Pat brought forward, uh, last week was on Lambert Park there.
Correct.
And you could see where he was talking about, and now you can actually point and describe it to me a little bit better, 'cause I was having a hard time following you last week, so you can kind of give me a little bit of clarification on your, your, your request. That'd be great.
Okay, so are you aware of Strath, uh, Lakeside Views? Do you know that area? It's the, it's the condominiumized, uh.
Runs right behind me.
Yeah, runs, runs just to the east of the library. It's a street of, of quite nice R-one homes.
Yep.
The question was, um, the pathway that, that comes to the north end of that ends, and then there's no sidewalk. They just have a street, which is, you know, it's a quiet street. But then, as you come forward, you could cut through Lambert Park, which would be on the west side of Lambert Village, and come up to the sidewalk on Park Lane Drive, right by the Hi-Ho, somewhere in there. The question was, could you shoot a pathway, a paved pathway through that park?
It could definitely be added to the plan, it's, it's, uh.
Okay.
I've walked that area, that where Stormwater Line comes through. We have a Stormwater Easement that actually goes through there. Um, and there is also, when we put the flashing R, the right by Hi-Ho.
Right, right.
That's where we want it to end, because we want people to.
Yeah. And, and I think the rationale for that pathway suggestion was that at least two schools.
I have a different map.
Sorry, I did print one extra one that was here.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, the rationale for that pathway through Lambert was that it was felt that it would, it would complete the loop of the wetlands and the pathway along the canal of Thomas Drive. And I know two schools use that alone just for the Terry Fox Run. So, I know you could, I know you could come out to the sidewalk by the Lutheran Church and then walk up the sidewalk, but I, I think the feeling was that a lot of people would, would much rather shoot through the park and, and, uh, come out at the sidewalk by Park Lane Drive. That's the rationale for why it was brought forward.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, considering the one, uh, the one that goes, I don't know if it's called, um, Big Side Pond Two, this, this pathway in here.
Yep.
Um, what's that complex called that?
Oh, Chinook Three.
Chinook Three.
Yep.
That part, that pathway is shown right now, is actually going on private property, right, which is also in the, uh, it's actually quite sensitive environmental area.
Is that the WID property, or no?
No, that's owned by West Creek.
Okay.
That whole lot of parts there.
Okay.
Where we, we put the Grace Park one, we actually had easement we used to put it through, but this one is an undisturbed, and it's part of there. When they talked about redevelopment was a trade environmental and that kind of stuff, so that might be a, a longer plate.
Okay.
So, to put that one through Lambert Park would be a, kind of, almost help with that, because that would be a long, long lot.
Mm-hmm.
And so, kind of move that out and trade that on the, 'cause I think that one that we talked, uh, showed you, that would be one of the last ones done, because it's gonna be a lot, a lot harder to get approved.
Oh, the one on the north end of?
This one, yeah, in front of.
On Strathmore Lakes? No.
Or another one that.
It's by Chinook Three.
Okay, okay.
That's gonna be one of the harder ones to get, because we don't have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Swatzky, as far as, uh, as far as this master pathway, if Mark feels that this is a feasible thing, do we, we don't need a motion to have that come, to be added to the master pathway plan, do we?
No, but I guess what I'm looking.
Are you just looking for direction?
I guess, I don't need, I, this, I just gave it to you this.
Right.
I, I will be bringing this back. I'll bring, I'll actually bring something, I think, in the next committee to hold. Bring it back. You guys have the opportunity, if you see something that doesn't look right and you wanna change it, bring it to me there. We can modify this. And then, once I get that back to you, I'll bring forward a, bring back the plan to council with a paving plan. Right? So, at that meeting, we can also talk about priorities in terms of part of the pathways, because there's a lot of different ones.
We can talk about all of them, like, they're all on the table?
They'd be all on the table, like, put it all on the table. We can put those in, take that information from council, make sure it's accepted by the, the, the council. And then what I wanna do is, council's approved, uh, this year's budget for, uh, for pathways, and we've basically broken over a ten-year period based on this thing. So, if you add more pathways, we could extend it or add more budget in the future, and we can kind of come up with a ten-year plan to build this out. And some of these are, uh, some of them are shown in here. It's not very clear in this drawing, are actually developer responsibilities.
Right.
And some of them will be our responsibility. I have another plan that I'll bring forward.
Yeah, and I think the, the, the one I mentioned, if you look to the Strathmore Lakes, Strathmore Lake.
Yeah.
The one I mentioned was the north end. We've already done the, the gravel and the, and the plastic barrier below the gravel. So, that one is, is one I brought forward just because it, it's so close to being completed, and there's so many seniors and residents who live around the lake. It, it seems to make sense to me to have that one finished off maybe ahead of other ones that are proposed, just because it completes the loop around the lake, and so many people would use that.
So, I think, you know, our, my priority this year is, and I think this is the direction I got from previous council, uh, for the pathways, will be along connecting the new school and fieldhouse to our community.
Yep.
It's that, it's the one that, there's a pathway on George Freeman Trail.
Yep.
And connecting it to the north and to the south. And if they're developers, we gotta get those, we gotta make sure if we have a school, we have to have connectivity to that fieldhouse and to our community by pedestrian. And that's what, that's what I'm assuming that's.
That was a huge priority, absolutely.
Okay.
And I, I just wanna make sure that this Strathmore Lake one is on everybody's radar.
That's on my radar.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Counselor Cox? Counselor Cox?
Mark? Sorry.
Yeah?
Can I request that you bring a magnifying glass next time?
Oh, you know what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna actually bring, uh, a bigger.
You don't need to have a solution. That's what I was gonna say. All you need to do is take this and make it bigger. The map is great. We just need the legend to be bigger.
A magnifying glass would be good for Counselor Cox.
It's actually one of those sized drawings.
Yeah.
And he gave me this, and he sent it to PDF to me and said, is this the current one? I'm like, yeah, sure, I'll print it out. And then I print it out, and I'm like, I can't even.
All we need to do is put the legend bigger. The map is okay.
Counselor Peterson?
I saw.
Oh, you're good? Thank you, Mark. Uh, so, six point five Calgary Regional Partnership General Assembly.
Could I, could I ask Mark a question?
Sorry, Counselor Montgomery, I did it to you again.
Sorry. Uh, Mark, I just, so I had a question about the, who is responsible for shoveling the, or like clearing the snow off the, the sidewalks where alleys are? Have you figured that out yet?
So, yeah, we looked at the, we've looked at the, uh, bylaws and our, and our, our policy. So, those are lanes.
Yep.
So, a lane in our snow policy are not, are non-priority roads, and they're not cleared. Although, there are sidewalks that go over our lanes, right? Those are part, just because it's concrete or asphalt or gravel, they're still lanes. So, they, we, we, those are our properties, but we don't clear those. And it's very similar. I looked at my own house in Calgary, and I have a lane, and guess what? It's a paved lane even, and that doesn't get cleared. My neighbors clear up to the lane X and the lane Xs, and that's where it ends.
Okay.
So, that's currently, we do not have the crews or the equipment to go around and actually do that for all the lanes in the community right now.
Yeah, it's okay.
It would be a significant increase if that was to be brought into our inventory to actually do, uh, because you have one here, six-year piece here, and we have to drive around the other side. So, that's, Craig would be having a lot of, his people would be.
So, so I, I had an idea that we should just throw some snow plows on the garbage trucks, and then they'll just plow the, the back alleys and everything for us while they're doing it, so.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
Nice, multi-use. Thanks, Counselor Montgomery.
Be okay.
Um, that brings us to our next item.
Sorry, Worship, I have a couple of min inquiry updates.
Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Usually, it's the Mark show, so I'm just. Um, so I just have two really quick updates. Um, one are, uh, to get back on the radars, we'll be bringing forward the FCSS business plan back to council for, um, for final review and adoption as well, um, it, sorry, in March. And then, um, a home support program, um, plan, as previously discussed, to, um, to transition that plan into a more sustainable model in, into the future, and that'll be coming into our, um, March or April committee of the whole. We're just waiting on a few more pieces from, from the province. Our goal really is to align that program, um, with standards coming down from the province and giving council some options on how they wanna move that program forward. So, we're working on that right now, and we'll be bringing that forward in the next couple of months. Uh, the other min inquiry is around our grant writing program, and there's a couple of pieces that we'll be bringing, um, to March with some policy to review with council. The first piece is, um, the feasibility of, of having our grant writer assist community groups with grant writing. They're working on, on what that could look like and putting maybe some parameters around it, so, um, her time doesn't get, um, too, spread too thin, um, knowing that she's also working on grants for the town and, and events for the town. So, they're working on some policy around that, and we're gonna tie in, um, the ability to create a database of, of grants for the community that people could access as, um, best practices and, and learning. So, you'll be seeing that at the March committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Tracy.
Can I just pause?
Uh, Counselor Peterson?
So, so when they create the database, they'll be going to a broader perspective, right, of, of, uh, other players in the community?
Yeah, so I think what we're gonna do is try and keep it really broad, and anyone who, um.
Wants in?
Wants in. If they contribute grants, they can review grants and make it really accessible. Yeah.
Thank you, Tracy. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Tracy, I just have a question. Have any community groups come to you yet? Because we have been kind of, um, spreading the word that the town may be available and that Lauren may be available, but have anybody, has anyone come and actually asked?
Yes, a few people. Um, and, um, we're assisting with a couple right now that we're doing in partnership, um, through both events as well as the FCSS department. So, anyone that we're partnering on, we're offering up some assistance, and then, um, we're gonna need to just put a few parameters around other ones. Yeah. But yes, we've been approached by a few groups, so, yeah.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer, and, uh, if there's no other questions or comments. Thank you, Tracy. And now, this brings us to six point five Calgary Regional Partnership General Assembly, which is on page forty-one of your handout. Ms. Swatzky? Oh, Mr. Thackeray.
Thank you. Uh, this is just information for council. Uh, the CRP is winding up. Um, Pat is attending, and, uh, it's for your information, and if you have any other questions or anything that you.
And if I could piggyback on your comments, uh, for those councils who might not totally understand or have familiarity with it, Calgary Regional Partnership is a, is a planning board that, that deals with issues surrounding the Calgary community to try to make sure that we're on the same page and that we're working together in, in a lot of things and in our planning and understand each other. It's being replaced by a provincially mandated growth management board. So, Calgary Regional Partnership is winding down. Some of their assets are being turned over to the growth management board, but the growth management board is going to have its own, its own administrative team. They're not taking anyone from the Calgary Regional Partnership. And this meeting that they've scheduled is actually now, has been switched to a morning meeting. It's going to be a breakfast meeting where we wind up everything. And then, in March is when the growth management board meets for the first time. Mr. Thackeray?
Whenever.
I'm done. I'm okay. I'm done.
There, just in relation to this, there was one other piece. Uh, we, the CRP has at least connected, uh, myself, or, I guess, yeah, um, Pat and myself have got a, um, connection from Southland, Southland.
Yep, Southland Transportation.
Transportation. Um, I don't know where that will go or whether there's further interest. This is a sort of the next evolution, I guess, coming from what was a pilot project for Onnit, which was a commuter, uh, service, which would be two or three ti- trips in the morning and evening. Uh, it's currently being done in South Calgary, um, Oka Tokes, Black Diamond, High River, so forth, foothills. Um, it has not, uh, got the, that far in our situation, and now with CRP winding up, uh, that whole thing is, has been passed off to Southland, so I don't know what, what council interest there is. Um, it's completely optional at this point.
And the High River, Oka Tokes, Turner Valley area had, this Black Diamond had decided not to carry on with, uh, the Onnit program after March thirtieth or so, because their ridership just was not there for it to continue. So, uh, the, the idea is that, uh, Southland Transportation is going to meet with Chestermere and Strathmore about seeing if we wanted to try regional transportation between our areas and the downtown or the parts of Calgary.
About it, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
I'm just wondering whether there is any interest or not. Um, I'm not surprised that this, uh, thank you for bringing that up, that the, the stats are really low, uh, from the south. I'm not sure it'll be much different here. I, I honestly don't know. So, if you do wanna pursue it, we'd have to get some empirical data. Um.
I think it would be good to at least check into it and just see if there's, if there's potential for it to work. Well, I know we have a commuter bus that goes in.
Yeah, there's a.
It's a privately run company. This would be one more that the, uh, our municipality would be a part of.
And that's what, they, they, I think it's the same, there's, there come one or two companies that are offering the service in a number of outlying areas around Calgary, so.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'm just throwing it out there. I'll just leave it, leave it in your court for now, and we'll tell us.
Thank you, Counselor Cox.
So, my question is a little bit more general. Um, being that the CRP is disbanding and turning over all its assets, do, how much do we have in stake?
Uh, I don't believe any money can go to individual municipalities. It's all, it's all, uh, going to be turned back to.
But how much did we put into it?
I, I don't have that figure with me right now.
I can answer.
Yeah, can you? Thanks, James.
Typically, uh, the municipality put in about somewhere around five thousand dollars a year. It was a very token amount into the CRP. The rest of the money was paid for by, uh, the provincial government.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Peterson?
We receive services and come answer it with our very small amount. We receive services and come answer it with our very small amount. That's what my question relates to, Mayor Fuel. In terms of the Onnit regional transit, there's no question that it did not work. And that presentations given to us in this room were, in my opinion, pretty misleading. But one of the things that Anuri said when he came was that in the grant funding that was allotted for the two-year, right? Two-year exploration, he said in this council chamber, in, in response to a question, that he would actively pursue a maiden Strathmore solution. And we talked about looking at all the options, including the current transportation systems that are utilized, looking at, at Sixica who runs transportation back through, through this community every day almost, through the Prairie, what is it called? The Prairie Sprinter out of Medicine Hat, that all of those things would be taken into consideration as, as we looked at a maiden Strathmore solution. Because we were aware, even at that time, even though they were being very enthusiastic about the Airdri Oketokes line, it wasn't going to work here. We were looking at some other options that were, that were closer to home. There was money set aside to do that through that two-year plan? On the, through, through the, we were...
Through CRP?
Through CRP.
There was, well, that money, it's not our money.
We, we understand that it's not our money, but it was designated. So my question is, in, on page 49, where it mentions the Onnit transit, that, that they authorize the, the brand assets as outlined in the request for decision to Southland Transportation in, in exchange for waiving the penalty. So does that mean that, that that money that they had received from government was allotted? Or does that come out of the core grant funding that will return to municipal affairs?
There was a payout penalty if, if the Onnit program was stopped before the contract was up. So in lieu of that, I believe the, the CRP, and I, to be honest, I've only been to two of those meetings since I was elected.
You're doing good. Keep going.
Yeah, anyway, the, the Onnit branding and, and necessary things were then offered to Southland Transportation to avoid paying a payout for break, for ending the contract prematurely with the Southline. That's the interpretation I have.
So then I am, then I am to understand that the two-year of study funding allotted through this process is gone. It's dead.
I believe it's dead.
That's my understanding too. And again, that's limited knowledge because I just joined them once I got elected. So I think that's it for the regional partnership, other than it's that breakfast meeting. And if there's anything major that comes out of that, well, obviously it's shutting down, we know that. And in March, the growth management board is starting up.
One follow-up question. I have one follow-up question. Are they offering payouts to their existing management staff?
Yes, there have been payouts voted on and accepted. They, they used, they used provincial standards as well as they brought in two law firms that dealt with this recommendations. They were given, there was a chart that we were given that showed the provincial average. And then I think it was a best case.
Could I, sorry, hate to be a pill.
No, that's good. I think you're, you're right in stopping me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't discuss that. I was, I almost fell into a bad trap there.
I thought maybe they were going to base it on the...
Yeah, all I can tell you is that there, there have been payouts made to the...
And, and I guess my point is that, that I don't need to know, considering the paltry sum of our contribution. And I'm assuming that they base it on the superintendent and Alberta Health salary payouts.
Ooh. Thank you. And, and not to make light of this, but I appreciate Mr. Thackeray stepping in because sometimes things are said in, in the public part of a meeting, sometimes things are said in camera. And I was straying dangerously close to in-camera items, so I appreciate you heading me off. You were gonna let me, yeah, thanks. Get run out of town. That brings us mercifully to the end of that, and we're on to the council procedural bylaw review, Ms. Swatzky.
That would be a procedure, Your Worship. Your Worship, council has had a number of informal discussions or comments coming forward about some changes that they would like to see in their procedure bylaw. So we've put this on the agenda tonight so that we can have an informal discussion about things that council would like to consider changing. I've compiled just a short list of a few matters that council has brought up. The first is meeting time and order of business. There's been discussion about holding in-camera sessions at the beginning of the meeting. And there's also been discussion or comments made about moving the meeting time back up to 6 o'clock. The other, a few other things that we've talked about is committee appointments, specifically how we appoint public members to council committees. There's been discussion around committee reports about councillors, or specifically councillors, giving reports on the committees on which they sit. And there's also been discussion, or administration is bringing forward administrative inquiries and to change the process so that administration can answer inquiries at the same meeting if, if they have the answer. So those are a few of the things that we've noticed, and this is open for council's discussion.
Thank you, Jen. Are there any comments from people?
Yes, Your Worship.
Counsel Cox?
I did notice in the email today that Bob's vote was for 6:30. I do, don't think that 6:30 is gonna cut it. I don't think that a half an hour is enough time for us in camera. So if 6:30 is going to be what we consider, I am not in favor of that. I'd rather go one way or the other. Either we start at 6:00 and we have an hour for in-camera at the beginning, or we have an hour at the end, whatever, but...
Thank you, Counsel Cox. Counsel Corbion?
I would rather start at 7:00, but whatever. I'll go with the majority. I'll figure something out. Like, as it is, my babysitter or husband aren't home until like 6:30, so it's, it's tough.
Will 6:00 work for you? Can you make it work, or is it very difficult?
I'm gonna have to find somebody else, but that's, it is what it is.
Okay. 6:00 is hard for you? 6:00 is hard for Mel? Counsel Peterson?
Do you want to like to do 3:00 in the afternoon?
You can do it. Well, your kids are so small. They're too little.
Counsel Peterson?
I, I, one of the things that I, that I'm really, really interested in pursuing, Counselor Fuel, is to whatever solution, because I, I don't have small children and not much of a life. And so, and so, uh... Time, time is not of the essence for me. But I would, whatever decision we make, I would really like to see it amenable to young families. I think that's really important. I, I have always tried to advocate for that. I don't have an answer to it. But, but whatever that is, I, I would really like to see that be a major consideration.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Peterson. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Thank you, Your Worship. One thing that I've really enjoyed about this whole process of being a councillor has been going through the meetings and, and understanding the political process a little bit more. But one thing I, I haven't enjoyed is the in-camera part at the end and, and the part that we have to go away from our public and send people out of the room. And it feels, it just doesn't feel right to me. So I would like to, whether or not we start earlier or still start at the same time, I really think it's important to move that in-camera, the part of the agenda that has to do with the FOIP to the beginning of the meeting, because a lot of the times what we're discussing during the meeting, it has to do with those items, and we have a better knowledge and a more firm understanding of the issues. So that would be my, my opinion.
Thank you, Deputy Maur, Deputy Maur, Deputy Bauer, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Thank you. I, I have to agree. I think a lot of times you pick up information in the in-camera that can make you do a much better job in the public meeting. The other thing is, there is that perception when you're continually going in-camera that people think something's wrong. And, and we always have to clarify that we, we do have to go in-camera at times because there are issues that come up that you cannot make public because there's sensitive things going on. So it's, it's an important part of the meetings, but just the way we do it. And I'd have to agree, sometimes our, our meetings have gone really late, and I sometimes feel very ineffective as we get later and later into the evening. Counselor Cox?
So I just need a clarification, Ms. Swatzky. I wasn't even thinking about what Counselor Bauer, sorry, Deputy Mayor Bauer, said about the fact that could we change the actual start time of our meetings?
Yeah, so this is council's procedure bylaw. You can do pretty much whatever you want with this. So you can consider...
Start at 6:30 in-camera, go till 7:30 and have our public meeting start at something, huh?
You can consider times. You can, can also consider different days. If Wednesday's a bad day, you could start earlier on a different day. Just giving you options.
That is, that is definitely true. I think the only thing we need to keep in mind is that we want to be consistent with our public so that they get used to a certain day and a certain time where they know they can come in and, and see the public meeting. I think we just need to be careful we don't shift around the public start time too much. But I, I really like the idea of in-camera first. I'm, I'm fine with, as far as myself goes, I'm fine with the 6:30 start time. Counselor Cox?
Nope, Corvion.
Counsel Corbion?
Thank you, Your Worship. Another thing that I remember, it was Counsel Sobel had said, we are sometimes trying to make a motion after an in-camera session, and that's not really fair because it's supposed to be in public and the public isn't there. So I, I under... Do you know what I'm talking about? So I, I do agree. I, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing the in-camera first. It's just, like I say, I, I'll, I'll do whatever the majority wants, so.
Sorry. Counsel Corbion, could you tell us what, what time was convenient for you?
7:00.
I could do 6:30. I can do 6:30. 6:30 is doable. 6 o'clock is, is tough.
Okay.
6:30 is good for you, Mr. Thackeray. Counsel Peterson?
Thank you. It wasn't to do with this particular issue.
Oh, okay. So it looks like if, if you're looking for direction, Counsel Sobel's not even here, but I think he was leaning towards 6:30. Ms. Swatzky?
Your Worship, would council want to then move the public portion of the meeting to 7:30? Okay.
Sure.
With an end date still of 9:30?
Yeah. We still need to have that end date of 9:30 because, and if public is watching, and I'm not sure why you would be, but if public, if the public is watching at home right now, we do have to take into consideration that some of our staff drive on the highways and late at night in some of these storms that have come up. I, I continuously, continuously worry about some of our staff having to commute when it's late at night and they've already had a full day of work, and then you add a full evening, and we're ending around 10:15, and then they've still gotta drive back to the, back to Calgary. So I, I think the public would understand that too, that we're trying to make sure we get an end time that's reasonable, not just for the public, but for our staff's safety too. Counsel Peterson?
Thank you, Your Worship. The, the one that I think is very, very important is with regard to committees. And, and I, when we were in strategic planning, you know, one of the, one of the comments that, that, one of the suggestions was that, that we could look at a, a whole new process for, for committees. And, and I was thinking, you know, it's, it's not gonna happen here today, but I was thinking how neat it would be to get information from the committees themselves to bring back about some of those processes. I, I've been listening to my fellow councillors attentively with regards to needs of committees and how, you know, and how to, how to link terms of reference to expertise and, and whether we can stagger terms to make sure that we, we have, you know, emerging competencies and all of those kinds of things. I, I'd really like to see input from, from, from our existing committees and our committee heads particularly, and, and then bring it back as something more comprehensive. I'm, I'm trying to be more patient. I, I would think that if we could do it before October, when, you know, to, so maybe to have a final plan in place by the end of September, I think if we could, if that was doable, and I'd like to see a strategic process in place. That's just me.
Thank you, Counsel Peterson.
Could become like the parking bylaw, just saying.
Thank you, Counsel Peterson. And you're a strong advocate of the, the verbal reports too as a means of knowing and learning about what's going on all, all the community committees.
I like what, what has come forward from, from legislative services to us about reporting. But I do, and I, and I like the fact that we don't take 20 minutes to, to read off of minutes that could be attached. I think it's good for the minutes to be attached for the public who want to access them. So I think it's very, very good that, that we have, that the council committees or committees of council have those minutes put in. And I, I really like that process. I think it's great. But there are other committees that are, that I think have critical pieces of information. I'm talking about the, you know, where the town has a lot of, a lot of invested interest, vested interest and invested interest. So the management board, the Marigold Library, and Wadamsa, these are all money issues for this council. The public deserves to know, and certainly it's a good awareness for council. It also, it also brings a bit of attentiveness to the board that, that, that our public knows that we're attending these meetings, that the people on the, that we share these council positions with know that we're reporting back. So, so I think that, I, I like what I saw from Counselor Corbion and Counselor Bauer, these quick 30-second reports. I, I really appreciated it.
Thank you, Counsel Cox.
I just need some clarification. Do you expect, or should we be doing minutes on, for example, I sit on the community futures and I do not believe that they will allow...
Sorry, Counsel Cox, did you want to interject at all, or?
They won't allow me to give you their minutes.
Yeah, so, so the, the procedure bylaw in its current state says that if council wants to report on a committee, that they submit the report for the agenda, and then that way it's published in the agenda. I think we put that, or I know that administration put that in there so that we didn't have long reports typed out in the minutes, but that those reports would still be in a public document. And council at the meeting can still read their report or report, you know, give a, a summary of their report in public. If council wants to change that process, we can, but that's what it currently states.
Thank you.
So, so just to follow up from that, it's onerous sometimes and not timely to get it on, to get it into the minutes. And I, I know that that's a problem, and I don't know how to counter it. At some point in time, it should become a part of the record. There's no question. But sometimes there, there's a, there's a timely factor. So if there's a two-week gap, that's problematic.
So something we could consider would be that council still provide written reports that could be handed up until the meeting date, and that those reports could be attached to the minutes, but not typed right into the minutes.
I like that idea, and I, and I think it's responsive and it speaks to all those things I talked about earlier. And, and then the other thing that I don't mind, you know, at the, at the, you know, I don't know what my fellow councillors think about it, but I don't mind putting a limit on it. I don't mind putting like a two-minute limit.
Thank you, Counsel Peterson. I, I totally understand. Counsel Montgomery?
I've just started, I guess, stray a little bit off here. I was hoping that we could maybe get administration inquiry responses kind of detailed in the, the minutes instead of just like, just answers from, to administration inquiries. Get the actual answers so that the public can, can go back and read them. Is that possible? Yeah.
Sorry, just for clarification, the responses to the inquiries?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if those could be like actually listed in the thing.
Yeah, I would think that probably, you want them in the minutes, or could we attach them or put them in the agenda as a report? Attach them to the minutes as well?
Well, I just like, so for instance, like, like when you go back and you look at the previous meeting's minutes, it just says, you know, responses from, for admin inquiries, and it doesn't actually say what any of the responses were. So it might be helpful if they actually had the, the actual responses in there. But if there's a better way to do it, then I'm all ears to it, so.
Yeah, we can, we can come up with a way to get those responses in the minutes, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Montgomery. Good idea. Counsel Corbion?
It's a C. It's a C. Thank you, Your Worship. The only issue I'm finding with that is someone had, Jen had said something about answering admin inquiries on the spot if they know the answer. How would you incorporate that?
We would just record them in the minutes, Your Worship.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Jen, are we good with that on the council procedure?
I just have a process question.
Counsel Peterson?
So, so if we're gonna talk about a, a committee process, do we need to bring that up as a motion in direction in the next meeting? We don't need a rise and report, we could do it next meeting.
Yes, Your Worship. Yes, I will remind you. Yeah, I just want to clarify one more thing, just so that I'm clear, um, that, um, committee, uh, appointments to committees, we're requesting, um, a, so, input from committee members on, on how they, they would see committee members appointed, and then, and then from that, we'll bring that report back to council and then determine, um, make determination each committee separately, or as a whole.
So you're, you're, you're looking for either a broad way to deal with committee appointments, or as you, as you go each by each, each committee?
Right, that's, that's what I'm asking.
So you're looking for direction?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Peterson?
I have none, but, 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 but I was, I was thinking, I, I never, I never considered to do it piecemeal, but, but that might be a better solution. But maybe that's one of the questions that could be put to the committees. I think it has merit, because not all committees quite remember.
Yeah, so in the procedures right now, it says that the terms of reference shall determine how committee members are pointed to those committees. So if we do it, and we could do it individually, um, and set out requirements or, of people wanting to sit on the committee, or, you know.
Would you then need a report from each committee to show how they're going to choose?
We would need a recommendation from each committee.
Just recommendations, yeah, just recommendations, yeah. Input.
Okay, so we're in agreement that we're looking at individual committee by committee?
Oh, yeah.
As far as, uh?
Let's talk about, let's leave it open, let's leave it open. Let's just leave it open.
See what they say.
Okay.
Let us see the table.
Sure.
Yeah, we definitely just think of this stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, this is just information collecting and questions asked anyway at this point.
Yeah, because the rest of us have seen it, you know, we've seen it lots, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so are we good to move on to the next one?
Your Worship, I am good as long as council is.
Council good? Okay, 6.7, the Tourism Committee Terms of Reference, which is on page 131, this one sheet. 133, the Terms of Reference come in.
Um, I'm speaking for Ryan on this one. Um, we would like to ask council if you are amenable. We think, uh, just at the staff level, so Ryan has been working on the, the, um, Destination Marketing Initiative, uh, which was originally established by the last council as a Tourism Development Committee. Um, she's, he's been working with Darla's and as well, and we've been kicking around some ideas, and I've had some good feedback from, uh, counselors as well. Um, whether council would be amenable to amend the committee Terms of Reference, uh, and expand the scope of it, one of the, one area we think would be very much of interest to us would be to, rather than being very prescriptive in the committee composition, other than to have seven members, um, we would propose that we loosen up the specificity of, did I make that say that right?
You're close.
Thank you.
Specificity, but I think there's nine members.
Is there nine?
Yeah.
What have we got?
Staff.
Staff don't count, no.
You should count.
Staff do, but they're not voting members. Anyway, um, so yes, so we would like to propose, um, a revision if, of the committee and rebrand the committee, because it really is to establish, the whole purpose is, is the DMO establishment. Um, the, we really think there's a, there's a great value, and we have the highest regard. Uh, we would like to reach out to the SICCA, um, and have their participation, and we think this would be a really cool opportunity, um, to make something really kind of real, and work with them, uh, hopefully, and garner some support. Um, Denise has been really, really helpful with us in that regard. Uh, she has some great contacts there, also with the Blackfoot Crossing, uh, folks, and we're wondering if you're interested in this. We think it'd be a really good thing to do. Um, we know there, there hasn't been, we, we know it was part of the last council's action plan, um, but if you're okay with this, we'd like to, we'd like to kind of hit, hit it, broaden its reach and its scope, because I think it's, it's really vital that we do this right, and we get, get some really, there's some great people here that, that I know, I'm sure would be interested. Uh, but I think it'd be really cool to have SICCA and give them a meaningful role. Uh, certainly there'd be at least one member of council for sure. Um, but we would, rather than being so specific in this, we could, we would like to propose some different language, still having seven people, but the other part we would also is to invite applications, and council would, they'd be based on merit, so it wouldn't be just, uh, there, there'd be some, a little bit more robust. It's a, it's a really important thing that we, if we get it right, uh, we'd like to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions? Counselor Cox?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, though, that when you say broader spectrum, that you're still going to give it some parameters.
Oh, yes.
So these aren't, these are going to be significant members of the community, not just-
They are not going to be, or?
They are going to be still, like, so.
That would be the intention, but ultimately, it's council's discretion. But, absolutely.
Thank you.
There's some heavy hitters here that we'd like to certainly at least encourage. Council could encourage them to come, but it really is, it's really vital, I think, that it's council's purview, so.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor Peterson?
So the intent is then to change the, this, to change what we have in front of us?
Yes, we would propose, and again, this is-
Before we, before we go to community to actually ask for, for people?
Yes.
We would actually change this.
Actually change this, and it, we could bring it back to the next council, um, run and run for some, some two or three weeks, at least, put a, put a, put a call out. Um, and I think rebrand, we feel rebranding would be beneficial, because this is what it's really all about. I, i- and it's, it's an important thing. There's, we have a lot of opportunities, and I think we, I don't, I think we've got some, there's some real opportunities with the SICCA, and it's a great way to reach out to them, because they're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're, um-
Just as a further discussion point, is there, um, is there any, um, not necessarily need, but is there any, um, positive that could come out of, or could this be of help to have someone from the Ag Society, uh, be a part of this?
It could be.
I'm just thinking that they-
Sure, Counselor Peterson? One, one of the things that, that we've very briefly discussed and hasn't come to council was how many, how many groups have input into this process? And, and it's really, really important that the Ag Society, that the Recreation Board, um, uh, Western District Historic Society, the, uh, the Arts Community, that they all have input into this. And one of the things that, that I thought was, I don't know if it was Ryan or Tracy, but what, you know, they talked about, wouldn't it be great to be able to, under this branding process, wouldn't it be great to have, once a year, to have all those invested people come together to, to meet, under, under the Terms of Reference and, and have that input? I think that's a great idea, and, and I would, I would really like to see that, and whether SICCA wants in, or whether they want to be a part of that other, other part, I think, I think that they would appreciate being asked regardless.
So do you see, do you see there's value in having someone from the Ag Society be on the committee, or just be open to come to that once-a-year thing?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know, like, I, I think when, when they go back to, to, to do this, I, I, I see, I guess, I don't see a huge benefit in having committee members sit on another committee, but I see enormous benefit in having the wisdom of those committees have input to this process. And I know from other projects that, that the, that our contractor has undertaken, that, that she's shown huge capacity to incorporate that.
Yeah, it could be really-
So are you envisioning like an annual general meeting, then, kind of a thing?
Not a gen- not a general meeting so much as a strategic, sort of a strategic plan, or I forget the word, was it your words? I, I don't remember, but, yeah.
Yeah, it was in the form of like just strategic planning, info sharing, kind of.
Workshop.
That's good, yeah. Uh, Counselor Corbion, and then I think Deputy Mayor Bauer is next after.
Thank you, Your Worship. If we're inviting SICCA, would we benefit from even the county, then? Like, where would we stop? Like, I, I don't see why would we, you know?
Yeah, you're, you got a good point there.
Going with neighbors and community and stuff like that, I don't know. I, I, I would maybe extend the, the invite to them as well.
Well, these are, these are-
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And if, they're certainly, these are your Terms of Reference.
Yeah.
And our neighbors are important to us, and I think we, I don't know, there's, there's good opportu- I think there's some good momentum right now, and I think we want to build on that, and I think we could be more strategic with this, and I think reaching out to a couple of these key neighbors is pretty important, and I think, uh, boy, SICCA, they're, they're pretty sharp.
Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Thank you, Your Worship. This was actually, the Tourism, um, Committee, or the tourism vision for Strathmore was something that I campaigned on, and, um, it, it's something that's very close to my heart, and I'm, I'm looking through this, and I'm very excited that you're looking at, um, some strategic planning, some, some development of these Terms of Reference, because there are stakeholders here that are missing. And I'm hearing, um, snippets like Counselor Peterson's just said, and Counselor Corbion has said, that, um, we're, we're missing out, and one that I would like to bring to the table is the Canadian Badlands, that we are, you know, they, we are a part of them, and yet we don't have representation from them on one of our committees, so I would like to also put that forward. And I, and I think that we really need to, um, put some thought into this before this committee meets, and think about what, what is going to be strategic going forward, and how are we going to make our town a destination for, um, marketing, and, and how are we going to present ourselves to the public? It's so important for our economic development.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Counselor Cox?
So my only concern that I see happening here is we've gone from seven members to 11?
We're not, we're not proposing more, more people?
Right, so-
We're proposing to loosen up the, the specif- specif- spesis?
Yeah, and I under-
Specificity.
I under-
Specificity, thank you.
Understand that, except for then you saying you're gonna loosen the specificity, but you're a little, little ladybug. It's sketchy, but SICCA's not, that, that is a specific group. The County We land is a specific group. The Ag Society is a specific group. The Canadian Badlands is a specific group. And I do see a few on here already that are very vital as well, that should be involved. So now, which ones are you gonna loosen?
Well, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I think we would like to, um, keep the, keep the lid, make, if council is agreeable to perhaps expanding to nine, I wouldn't go beyond nine, because I think there are different ways to include different groups. Um, I think the seven is a reasonable number of people, um, and certainly one member of council. Uh, we would recommend that there be one member of council on this, but in the, in the case of SICCA, they are, it's a government-to-government relationship, so there's a different, it's a different, it's a different, um, relationship than we have with, uh, other NGOs or societies, as vital as they are. It is, it's a different relationship. So I think, I think the, I think we have to be sensitive to that, and that's why I think, um, for us to be specific in, say, two spots, that would be one of them, because they are, they, they're very separate. They're, they're very extremely different than we are, and likewise with our, our neighbors, even in the county. They run, they, they operate under a completely different legislative constitutional framework that's quite different from ours.
Counselor Peterson? Uh, Tracy, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, if I may. I think one of the things we need to do with the Terms of Reference, and we've discussed this a little bit, is define the difference between the doers, who are gonna sit on the committee and take action.
Yeah.
And the partners.
Who are gonna advise.
Yeah.
And once you can divide those two groups, then you'll know who you want on the committee and who you want to be part of that strategic advisory piece. Because you don't want people on here that are gonna say, give good advice, but not actually do anything. This committee is gonna be very action.
Thank you. Counselor Peterson?
Following up to, to exactly what Tracy said, we, we need to understand this is a, this is a Strathmore branding exercise. So we need strong partnerships, but it is a Strathmore. And so, so you're absolutely, so, so she's absolutely right when she talks about defining, you know, who, who, who comes to the table, who advises, and who partners. I think, I think those are really important distinctions that need to be clarified in a Term of Reference.
Thank you.
That's a good comment, thank you.
Any other comments as we move forward? We're good?
So-
James?
If you're, if you're okay with this, we will, we will seek out, uh, some, uh, input and, uh, bring back some proposed draft, uh, minor changes to this Terms of Reference, and based on our feedback today, and we really appreciate it. Thank you for that, and, uh, really glad you gave us, because there's some stuff we didn't even think about either, so that's really cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item 6.8, CAO Report to Council.
This is a-
Oh, Counselor Peterson, did you want to wrap up somewhere?
Uh, just move to go in, into ca- in-camera, this is an in-camera item?
Oh.
Is it, or no? No, it's not, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a housekeeping item, just to, uh, move acceptance of the, of the two reports in the Q4, that's all.
So move, Your Worship.
Okay. So we have to come out of committee the whole?
Yeah, so move to come.
Okay, so we have a motion to come out of committee the whole. All in favor? And then?
Stand the report.
I, I would move that council accept and approve the CAO report to council as presented at the February 7th, 2018 regular council meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. You've all heard the motion, all in favor, and now we're looking for a motion to go in-camera.
I see you.
Oh.
Are we done?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've gone through all the points.
We are done.
We have, uh, we are in, we've come out of committee the whole, we're in the public meeting, and we have a motion from Deputy Mayor Bauer to go in-camera. All in favor? And we're going into camera at 8:51.